Horizon time does say it's six o'clock.
No, I just didn't want to sit there all day.
I get that.
It is, horizon time says it's six o'clock. Call the March 26th City Council meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Leiborn?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Royball?
Here.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
One member is absent, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the code of the Constitution stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation of C.A. are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Are there any items that any of the body would like taken from the consent agendas? Hearing none, may I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All right, and that's non-debatable, so all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
There's one no, Mr. George Johnson, motion carries.
Next item is number six, vouchers.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I did want to point out, my understanding was that there was possibly some people here that wanted to speak to the Reed Avenue rail corridor, and that is on, was on the consent agenda, will get referred to committee and would not have been discussed tonight, so I just wanted to let them know in case they were hanging around wondering when we were going to get to that.
Mr. President, do you want to announce when that committee will be next?
That goes to Public Service Committee, which is next Tuesday, the 3rd of April, at noon in room 104.
Next item is number six, vouchers.
Any public discussion on vouchers? Any public discussion? May I have a motion on vouchers?
Second.
Has been a motion by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion on vouchers. Any discussion from the governing body on vouchers? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
Public hearing for retail liquor license transfer of location application filed with the city clerk's office for Steamboats Limited Liability Company doing business as Steamboats Wyoming Steak and Smokehouse from 1947 Dell Range Boulevard to 115 East 17th Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Is there anyone from Steamboats here to address this? Would you probably come up to either this mic or that mic? One in the middle or the far one, whichever you'd rather? And please identify yourself.
My name's Scott Root, I'm an investor with Steamboats.
Okay. Anything you'd like to tell us, Scott?
We're presently trying to work out a new lease, or extend our lease. We have a 10-year lease, but we're trying to get some new terms on it, so it's currently in negotiation.
Okay. And are there any questions by council members from Mr. Root?
Mr. President.
Mr. Royball?
Do we, do you want us to move forward with the change?
Yes, at the time, we're looking at other locations right now, I spoke with the city clerk's office several times. Should we hammer out better terms on this lease, then I'll stop the application process immediately, probably until April 9th.
All right, and Mr. Royball, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Root? Thank you very much. All right, so is there any public comment on the transfer of the location of the liquor license? Any public comment for the hearing? Any comments from council? Any further questions? Hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met and it is closed. And the action, all right, and then this item will be referred to the Finance Committee.
Ordnance third reading, amending section 1.16.050 Offsite Improvements Requirements of Chapter 1.16 Annexation and Infrastructure Improvements of Title I General Provisions of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Any public comment? Any public comment on the ordinance? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion's paid by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Case. That's true.
Scott's feeling lonely. About one time to shiny, you took it away from him.
That is your one time. Mr. Royball can have a report, please.
Okay. Mr. President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading.
All right. Now, we'll take Mr. Johnson's motion and Mr. Case's second, I apologize. I was trying to get, set a record for being done here, you know? All right, discussion by the council on the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
For Mr. Rowland, please. My question is, just through you, clarification in regards to the deed of the property, if it is perhaps sold to another individual and the process that goes with that, and how the money is actually, follows the property.
Ben Rowland, Cheyenne City Attorney's Office. Number paragraphs three and four of the ordinance deal with the person's responsibility or entitlement to the refund, so number paragraph three specifies that if the refund is being paid to the current property owner, that person gets the refund and a notice is attached to the property, basically notifying potential purchaser that there is a, that the current owner is responsible for that payment amount. But number paragraph four provides for if the recipient is no longer the current owner of the property, that they are not going to be relieved of that responsibility for the payment. One other possible scenario is that the parties might contract for the refund to be transferred to somebody else, for example, in the sale and purchase of a home, and parties could do that as well. And we have language in number paragraph two to provide for that, where it says that such other person as is legally entitled thereto might be the person that would receive the refund. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, are you finished? Are there any other questions or any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Leiborn?
Well, I'm not sure how well everyone understands what we're doing here, but we are refunding amounts of money that were given by these property owners for the purpose of improving the streets in East Cheyenne. And having served on the council at the time that this came about 10, 12 years ago, and having followed the process of those county pockets or islands and the infrastructure that needs to go into them, I just want to make a real point here to my fellow council members, particularly those from Ward Three, that we keep growing and leapfrogging over these areas. And we're now in the situation where we're refunding money to those individuals that were ready to pay for those infrastructure services. So, basically, I think you could say we've abandoned our efforts to bring those numerous pockets, particularly those in Ward Three and East Cheyenne, up to code, make those parcels more developable, help these individuals not have the drainage and other problems that they have. So, this is really significant, that what we're doing here, in my opinion, is basically giving up on a program we began for a very important purpose. And I hope that when we go down the road here and we take a look at those six penny funds that are now going to be available for roadwork, we can take, begin again, and I hope the planning office is interested in doing this, so that we can begin to analyze and figure out some of those streets, some of those neighborhoods, and what they need in terms of filling in the infrastructure and bringing, you know, they're in the city, well, they're not in the city, they're in health or shelter out there. And really, I think it's very much our benefit and would have been to these individuals' benefit if we would have continued that program and built out those areas. So, that's something I'm definitely very interested in pursuing, and I think we should be looking at it in our upcoming budget, and we should be coming up with a program, lasting program, so that over time, we can bring these areas in and provide those people with the services that a city has, because they're surrounded. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leiborn. Any other comments? Any further comments? Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mr. President. My, now, my understanding, and maybe Mr. Rowland can help clarify this, but my understanding is that this piece of legislation is having to deal with properties that have already been annexed into the city, and where the infrastructure just has not been completed.
Ben Rowland, Cheyenne City Attorney's Office, again, that's correct, this would apply to properties that have been annexed, and at the time of annexation, property owners were required to put down their cash deposits for certain what are called offsite infrastructure improvements, and for whatever reason or circumstance, it hasn't been built yet, so we're providing an opportunity for refund now. But you're right, all of these properties, they've been annexed. One, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Any further comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Case?
I think this is the right move, but I, based on a letter that we received today, think we need to take a deeper dive into this issue. And I guess without getting into specifics, you know, it seems like some departments may be handing down mandates to do certain improvements upon property in order to get building permits and things along these lines, so I would certainly encourage staff to take a deeper dive into all of these, all the components of these kinds of issues. Thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Mr. President, through you, my only question is, why after 12 years, this hasn't, nothing's been done? I mean, these people put up this kind of money and we've done nothing but, I don't know, maybe collect interest on their money. I'm glad we're doing it, but I think we're, I mean, I don't know, you look at it, we might not be at this opportunity again, I mean, the next person might not have the money to put up front. Personally, I think we should have done it when we got the money, that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is an ordinance on third reading, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Leiborn?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Dr. Rennie?
As Chair, I will not.
Thank you. Mr. Royball?
Yes.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance first reading, amending chapter 8.56 Noise Control, section 8.56.060 Permit for Relief from Designated Levels of Title Eight Health and Safety of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
This ordinance on first reading will be referred to the Finance Committee.
Next item is number 11, resolution creating the Municipal Court Building Process Review Committee.
Mr. President?
Mr. Leiborn?
As sponsor of this resolution, I request this item be withdrawn from the agenda, but I do have some comments I'd like to make.
Then the comments probably should be made under Other Business.
We can do that, too.
All right.
Until then.
Okay, this item has already been referred to committee, so is there any objection from any member of the body if it's withdrawn? And it's withdrawn.
Mr. President, just for clarification, and I would defer to the city clerk, but in the past, we have not allowed topics that were on the agenda to be discussed in Other Business.
The alternative, Mr. Shaner, is that we go ahead and open it up for public comment and then make the motion and then withdraw.
Through you, Mr. President, I believe that's if the item were on the consent agenda?
You're answering my question.
Mr. Counselor Shaner. As the, as the item was on the consent agenda, when the consent agenda item passed, that didn't provide any public opportunity, so there, that's when we would say that that item has been dealt with and there was no discussion under Other Business on that item, if memory serves.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is number 18C on page five. Announcement of a public hearing to be held April 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for the City of Cheyenne's Annual Action Plan Fiscal Year 2018 to 2019, prepared by the Cheyenne Housing and Community Development Office. Announcement of a public hearing to be held April 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute, section 15-1-402, exists for Lot 14, Block 5, Homestead Edition, first filing repl at Laramie County, Wyoming, located south of Homestead Avenue, north of the Cheyenne Greenway. Announcement of a public hearing to be held April 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute, section 15-1-402, exists for a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Cheyenne Hills Church subdivision, and portions of the east half of section 25, Township 14 North, range 66 West, of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Laramie County, Wyoming, located north of and including Pershing Boulevard, east of Farthing Road, also located south of Sage Road, east of Gunsmoke Road. Other business.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this, under Other Business?
Can you hear me? My name's Ed Nocco, I live in Ward Three. A number of you already know who I am. What, what I wanted to talk about was the, the project on getting a new municipal court building. What I would like to state is that I really like Dr. Rennie's comments regarding adding the second floor up front and doing it. You know, our city in the past has done so many things to try to save a buck, and then later we spend 10 times as many bucks. And, you know, the comments I've been reading in the paper and everything, talks about the fact that, well, we'd have to get some more money, because the allotted money that was approved by the voters won't be sufficient to actually do that. I have a suggestion on where you can come up with the money, because I've been following this issue. Currently, the city is planning on spending a couple million dollars to put a roundabout behind the mall at an intersection. For some reason, they feel like people need to be able to zing on through that street, I don't know what the hurry is, but, you know, not all of the money is city, obviously, they're getting it from federal, possibly state, there's a bunch of places. Well, for starters, the state don't really have it, we know the federal government don't have it, and at this point, the city really, truly doesn't have a whole lot. My suggestion is, you've done a four-way stop on Ridge Road, and I believe it's Story. What's wrong with just making that into a four-way? You know, you put a sign back 50 yards in front of it, telling people, hey, you know, you gotta, you gotta stop sign up ahead. It's a heck of a lot cheaper to put a couple of posts in the ground with some signage than it is to go tear that whole thing up, disrupt traffic for how long, for what particular really purpose does it serve, you know? In the meantime, the money the city was going to spend on their share of that whole darn project could then be taken and transferred over to the municipal court building project, you know? There's probably some other areas along the same line where the city wants to spend a bunch of money doing something else that's really not necessary. The city, council included, have been well-known for doing a lot of that stuff over the, over the years. I've been here this time for 30 years. I've seen it even before when I was here in the 70s, you know, over and over and over. We get, try to save a buck here and we spend money foolishly other places. So, you know, scrap the idea of a roundabout, take the money, put in a couple of stop signs, and use the rest of the money for the municipal court building project. It's very simple. Saves me money, because as a taxpayer, I want you to do the best job you can with what I give you, you know? And it'll save money that the federal government don't really have. I know all these wonderful young engineers, they all love the idea of roundabouts, got to do these massive projects. You know, I'm old-fashioned, I still believe in paper and pencil, you know, in spite of computers and cellphones and everything else, I'm still a paper and pencil kind of guy. Simple, it's easy, and it works. So I suggest that the council get down, look at this thing again, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nocco. Any other public comment?
Hello, council members, my name's Astrid, owner of the Plains Hotel, and I am jumping up because I just want to concur with the gentleman that just spoke, that I think it's an excellent idea, for so many reasons, to go with a shell out on the second floor. The building traditionally was that, the town would appear to be more compliant with its antique historic origins. I would further say it would be really amazing to have something that had a similar amount of windows, sort of the same size, or whatever somebody could come up with. But my other thought for how to find the money would be, perhaps renting out that second floor sooner than later, maybe to attorneys or other business people. So I just want to concur that, I think that's an incredibly great idea, and I've been following it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, this will, you'll have ample opportunity, I'm sure, to comment on this later as we get some ideas on what cost figures are and where we're going at that point, so, but thank you. Any other comments? Any other public comment?
The roundabout behind the mall is not a good idea on a retiree from Wyoming Department of Transportation. I do crash, I did crash reports. There's a lot more crashes in roundabouts, and that should be investigated before it's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment under Other Business?
Mr. President, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Couple issues, and I'll just be brief and address one. One of the items before this council is the new municipal court. There is some idea to move that into the property located at the Fowler's Building. I guess I'm going to be blunt and say, from my perspective as representing that district, that would be a bad idea for me. And I could not support that, and I don't believe the constituents that I represent in that district could support that either. Based on the revitalization efforts of the downtown area, now, unless the council and the city can provide me and the constituents of this district with some hard statistics, some hard data, that says that building, if renovated to a courthouse building, would improve the economic viability of the downtown area and the Reed Corridor project, then I could probably lend my support in that direction. But otherwise, at this particular juncture, I see that currently, we have no real plan for developing retail in that downtown area, and those businesses that are down there are hanging on by a hope and a prayer. What I see is designs contrary to what a downtown area should be. If we look at almost all of the buildings down there, there is no street level retail, or very little street level retail, which we all know is the viable and basis for a viable downtown economic district. So, taking one more building, and a centerpiece building at best, out of that possible mix, to me, is extremely detrimental and the wrong sort of move. So I guess, at this point, I would just let the council know that this is the position of myself and a large number of constituents who live in my district. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anything further? Hearing none, anything under Other Business from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Leiborn?
Well, it's certainly been a brief meeting tonight, I think we all enjoyed that, so I hope you won't mind if I take a few minutes here to discuss the resolution that I drew earlier and its intent, and the issue that evidently is on a number of the people who attended here tonight's mind, and that is the reconsideration that we did two weeks ago on the purchase offer on the Z's Fowler's Carey Building. And I just want to point out that this obviously, the action we took two weeks ago to reconsider and to approve continuing that purchase offer is definitely well-intentioned, there's no doubt about that, as we... As we all know and see, the revitalization of downtown is a challenging, longstanding effort that the city's been involved in and has spent a considerable amount of money on public facilities there. But I do want to say that when you mix the purposes and the purpose of the specific purpose tax was the courthouse with downtown aesthetics, revitalization, and remediation of damaged properties, you're really getting far afield. And I find it particularly far to get far afield when I hear, the discussion I heard tonight of on that site and in that proposed building, continuing beyond the $9 million approved and adding another floor to a design that we don't have. That is perplexing to me. So, I brought forward the resolution that the members of the council are aware of, which called for a distinguished group of experienced people to look at the issue along with the city staff. But I couldn't get any traction on that. So, that's why I withdrew it. I would point out that it's quite possible that down the road, we might want to take another look at that idea. And the reason I say that is, in my discussions with Sylvia Hackel, the city attorney last week, she clarified to me several issues that I think are of great interest. And those are the expenditures we would be incurring at that site in addition to the $270,000, $5,000 purchase price. As we discussed and as I understand, we're going to have to be seeking several opportunities for people to propose on services to identify those environmental issues in the building itself. Not the property owner will be doing that. And that's a pretty extensive operation, I believe, in this case. And then, we have the case of the expenditure to demolish the building if we purchase it, which is unidentified at this point. And then, we have the cost of designing the building so that we can determine if it fits, or at least, I don't know, a 35% design, a partial design, to come up with some costs, again, at our expense. So, you're running into some really significant expenditures that I believe are outside of the scope of the language in that ballot and that are, if they're going to come from that purpose, are going to decrease our ability to construct that building. And I just want to say that the main purpose of my withdrawn resolution is to do what hasn't happened yet. And that is determine what the court needs, what the court's future needs are. How many courtrooms are we talking about? Does anybody really know? What are the very critical technological steps that are necessary for municipal court in this day and age, as well as into the future? Have we done any analysis of that? I haven't seen that. So, I just want to express my concern again about the choice that we made two weeks ago. The choice was to continue with a purchase offer that basically, as noted here in our minutes of this meeting, was represented by the agent for the property owner, the out-of-state property owner that, in my opinion, has not maintained that building to the degree that it should have been maintained. So, you actually have a lot of that harm to that property coming from the neglect of the property owner. And he talked about, the agent talked about agreeing to take the market off the, to take the property off the market to the city's benefit. And that if we didn't act in an expeditious manner on this purchase, that it would go back on the market, which has been on the market for many years. So, if we don't take advantage of this, what's going to happen? I really question how in the world we're going to be able to justify and act over a period of time as whether these matters come through the vouchers or contracts. These issues clearly are major expenditures that are to the benefit of Mr. Sean Lim, not the City of Cheyenne. If that property is to be considered for this purpose, which I think is questionable, then surely these expenditures should be borne by the property owner, not the City of Cheyenne. So, I'm disappointed that we made this reconsideration choice. I think that a better concept would have been to utilize some very knowledgeable people about the courts and go back to the beginning and really understand what it is we're trying to do here and what the nature of that court is. I haven't seen the documents or the schematics or the analysis of the court, what needs to go in the court, before you ever start talking about the property that you buy, the building that you design, and furthermore, the addition that is now conceived of being added on to it. I think this is questionable public policy. I certainly intend to continue to question it. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labor. Any other comments from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
I would just like to request if the city attorney could draft a memo for all of us in regards to the firefighter contracts, in regards to the Supreme Court decision that was made a couple of years ago. Negotiations took all of two days, where they typically took us 29 days in the past. And so, I just wanted to make sure that I could clear my head and have a peace of mind that the gentleman's agreements that were brought up in specific chapters and other parts that were repealed from the existing contract actually were following the Supreme Court decision that decisions up to that point were made without council approval because from what I understood, the last two years or the last two times that we did it, we were supposed to have a quorum at all points for those decisions as they were brought forward. And so, if you could just draft a memo to give me peace of mind to this Supreme Court ruling.
Mr. President, in response to Mr. Johnson's request, I will certainly do so. However, I would like to state on the record, since he asked his question on the record, that the Wyoming Supreme Court decision overturned a previous practice of this city council of allowing one or two members of the council to negotiate and required the presence of a quorum of the council at discussions. However, the previous collective labor agreement agreed upon by this council last year created a labor management committee with language that was part of the International Association of Firefighters Model Contract to permit a labor management committee to meet, indeed, to direct this labor management committee to meet on a monthly basis throughout the year to discuss issues of mutual concern and to bring items back to the council. That is exactly what occurred. The Wyoming Supreme Court did not in any way, shape, or form state that, first of all, that the entire council needed to be present at meetings of the labor management committee. And in fact, this council agreed to the composition of that committee. Nor does the Wyoming Supreme Court opinion state how many times this body had to meet in the open negotiation sessions. I am confident, and I will so state on the record tonight, that the negotiations were in complete compliance with law, and I will provide a memo to that effect.
Thank you. Any further comments under? We're adjourned.